All right, good evening. Welcome to the Stratum Memorial School Regular School Board Meeting for Wednesday. It's today, August the 12th. Just a few reminders, you know, we may have a non-public session. I don't believe there's one on the agenda this evening, but if one is required, we will announce it and we will go through the appropriate process. We will also have an opportunity for some Q and A after the administrative report and what the administrative team is proposing as part of the remote learning. So there will be an interactive chat. We will do our best to answer as many of those questions as possible during that time. Until then, we have a couple of board activities that we need to address first and foremost. I see board minutes for May, May 27th, non-public minutes, June 10th, public board minutes, as well as June 10th, non-public board minutes. So ask the school board if there are any edits or any modifications to any of those minutes. Can't say I saw anyone when I looked at them this morning. All right, I'll ask any edits to that. Otherwise, I would look for a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, so a motion by Cheryl. Do we have a second? Second by Sarah. Any further conversation? All right, so we'll do a roll call vote. I'm just going to go across my screen. So Erin.
Hi.
Okay, hi. Krista.
Hi.
Sarah. Sarah's an eye. Cheryl.
Hi.
And myself's an eye as well. So approval of the minutes for June 10th, both public and non-public, as well as May 27th is approved 5-0. That rates. Looking at my notes. Onto the board reports. I do not have a chair report prepared for today. I think we've been talking on a weekly basis, so I haven't necessarily put one together. I would look to either, I see, I think Michelle, you're on from a financial report. I know we're early in the year. Is there anything that needs to be brought to our attention?
No, we are just in the beginning of the year. We did send you the projected ending of the previous year, which was provided to you earlier. We're looking at approximately $360,985 going back to the taxpayers after the board approved appropriations. So if you have any questions on that, I can also give you the trust balances that existed as of the end of June 30, 2020. We had $485,874.63 in the spend trust and the maintenance trust was $123,246.15.
I have a question. You said four, I'm sorry, 369.85 at the year end. Turnback budget. I thought we were aiming for 150. One, sorry, let me look at that because I was just this morning.
It's in the minutes of the May 27th one. Under 8.1, board wanted to return roughly 150,000 to the town.
Yeah, did we have something not come in of real significance? That would be a couple, almost quarter of a million dollars.
So we had, we had three, three items which brought us additional monies for the end of the year. We had projected approximately 50 to 60,000 in your food service loss and it was significantly lower than that after she had some checks come in. And then we were able to close out a bunch of additional purchase orders, which were not needed by teachers and for other supplies and services at the end of the year. And we did bring in some additional revenue that we had not known about at that last meeting.
Okay, but we did, like we made the retire repayments. We did that.
Correct.
The Hive, the Kate's requirements for hardware and software for 68. We did all that stuff, right?
Correct. We accrued all of the retirements that were out there for Stratum and we also had, we accrued back the $80,000 in the tech purchases that you had approved.
Okay. So the difference must be primarily that revenue piece that we did, we don't usually count, right?
Yeah, there were quite a few purchase orders that were, we were able to, you know, that were not needed. And yes, there was additional revenue too.
Okay.
Some good news for a change. We'll take that. Any other questions as it pertains to the finance piece? Then I'll ask, it's not on this list. I mean, from a policy perspective, are there any policies that, well, I guess this being it's the August meeting, right? There was no meeting in June and July, so there's no policies. Esther, just real quick, I think we were, for the most part, caught up on policies. Is that correct?
Yes, that's, that's correct. You know, we're, I think all the boards are going to be looking at things that may come up. So we may have a slew of them, you know, more than we normally get at the beginning of the year once that policy committee starts to meet. A lot got stopped, as you recall, when we, everything kind of stopped on that March date, the policy committees, et cetera. So normally those would continue at least through June and they didn't. So I anticipate, once that resumes, there'll be numerous policies kind of coming forward to all the boards.
Eric, last time we talked about looking at the board goals. I don't know if we want to do it this meeting or wait till next meeting to kind of revamp them and modify them.
So that was a good point. I think that was something we had discussed putting on the agenda for today. But I, you know, again, given everything that's gone on, I certainly slipped my mind. So thank you for the reminder. I would ask Esther, can we, can we throw that on for our next meeting? And we'll, we'll spend some time and then I would ask the board to come to the next meeting with a few goals that we can discuss and sort of discuss this part of next year. All right, if that's the case, I'm going to move to the administrative report, the listen and learn on the SMS school presentation. Dr. Ryan, I didn't know if you were going to be opening up the question piece there or you knew that after? How are we going to handle that logistically?
So I, I'm here for a little while. I also have an East Kingston School Board meeting going on. It's a business meeting tonight. I left that to come here. Fortunately, I ended it by accident to come here. They've since resumed it. I will be rejoining them in a little while. I just wanted to, I think, I'm going to have Esther, I'm going to make Esther the co-host so that she's going to be able to manage the chat function. What we would like to recommend is, I'm going to open up the chat function. As you have the, you have some frequently asked questions already that already have the answers. So we're going to make sure that all of our attendees and panelists will be able to see those before she posts those. But then we're going to limit our attendees to asking questions that only panelists can read. And it's not to prevent attendees from seeing those questions. It's to just curb the amount of back and forth between the attendees in the chat function so that we're able to get to everybody's questions. We'll read them aloud. We'll read them into the record. We'll respond as best we can to them. I think that this will naturally come after. Are we presenting this evening, Esther? Are our administrators prepared to present this evening? That's what I thought. So the chat function will open up after our presenters share their plans. And then that way we'll post not only this video, but also the entire chat, chat function. So people can see all the questions that were asked. They'll be answered in video, but we'll also be adding them to, we'll also be adding them to the, excuse me for just a second. We'll be adding them to the website. So everybody will be able to see all of that information. And so right now I have, we've received two panelists because the chat was open just to you, two panelist questions. So we'll go to those, I think, after the presentations from this Lucas and her staff.
And I ask, can we ask our own questions before we go to the chat? It just says a break in between because I have some questions that I have on my list from our last meeting pertaining to opening. I just want to make sure we get those.
Sure, I'd ask Eric to weigh in on how he'd like to have that handled. Is that, is that what you'd like to do, Eric?
That's fine with me, yes.
All right. So, and so as everyone knows, we're, we're building a remote instruction plan for all of our schools with opportunities for in-school learning for, for students, small numbers, as well as for special reasons and otherwise. So I think Monday night, with the number of people who heard all of our planning and the answers to many questions, that chat function produced 100 pages of questions, comments. I think it's important for the community to hear directly from their administration about what's happening in their school. So we're not going to be summarizing this, the SAU-wide plan again because that's already been recorded and it's available to everyone. However, we certainly want to hear from our school administrator. So Esther, if you take that away for me and do the lead in, I'd really appreciate it.
Esther, you are still on.
Got it. Thanks. Kate and your team, I know they've been working hard on this presentation and I'm very confident that many of the questions that have come in to me will be answered. I also will put in the chat all the majority of questions I got up until about 5:30. I will post that and the answers that Kate and her team and myself answered this afternoon. So you can see the answers to those questions. So Kate and team, take it away.
Esther, do we have screen sharing capabilities so that I could put up the presentation? We do. Okay. Let's see. Let's see. Sorry, you guys. It's taking me a bit longer than I anticipated.
You want to unshare until you find it?
Okay.
Okay.
I'm an open book, Cheryl.
Okey dokey.
So I'll start off the presentation, just talking a little bit about our planning. Our planning really did begin essentially in June of this year. And certainly, we had to plan for diverse possibilities, but we did have some things in mind regardless of what direction we had to take because of the pandemic. So much of what you're going to hear tonight, we feel would be essential regardless of where we were and where our students were. And we feel really confident that the direction our teachers and staff are going to take to engage our students in complex learning is profoundly important. And we feel like we'll address many of the needs of the students and the families in Stratum. So we had a list of priorities. Obviously, they're not all encompassing on here, but these were the things that really rose to the top and we felt needed to drive our decisions as we move forward towards planning to return to school in whatever format that looked like. This has certainly been tweaked a little bit, given that we know we're going fully remote. But like I said, the essential components were important regardless. So staff and student well-being, of course, relationships and connections, which we've heard from many parents is important and they want to understand how we're going to do that from a remote platform and what that's going to look like. That's been particularly important to those parents of our youngest children. Student equity, which will continue to be at the forefront of how we navigate the remote experience, understanding that our families are facing a variety of different circumstances and wanting to ensure the quality and excellence of education that Stratum is known for, regardless of what that looks like. We want to articulate the difference between remote learning and online learning because they are two very distinctly different things and it's important that our community understand that. We want to use our time together to assess the whole student and that means beyond just literacy and mathematics, but really thinking about them as a communicator, as someone that advocates for themselves, deep thinking, complex problem solving, and so on. We want to align our approach with the competency-based principles. We want learning to be relevant, deep and engaged. And of course, we want to collaborate with each other, our students and our community. And then whatever we do needs to back up into the SMS essentials. So before we get into the plan, we did want to talk a little bit about the survey that we sent out to parents actually this morning and we're feeling really good about the number of responses already. So at about 5:45, we had had 258 families respond out of the 383 families we have at Strad Memorial School, which is about a 67% return in less than, you know, eight hours, which is outstanding and feels really good. So 81.8% of our respondents reported that they're going to send their children back to the remote experience. 2.7 are not returning and the two not returning columns were either for homeschooling or to go to private school. And then we did have a number of families that are undecided, that are waiting to hear more about our plan before they make a decision. So that is what makes up our responses. The other question that we asked our parents, and you'll see where it says top four elements, we asked them to pick the four things that they think were most essential to their student's success in a remote experience. Part of that is to really think about our planning as we move forward to ensure that these things are in place to provide the best quality education remotely for our students. They were consistency and routines, live remote instruction, meaning they wanted direct instruction from the teacher, small group instruction, and then in addition to those remote experiences and online experiences, a balance of hands-on learning experiences. And then the final bullet on this slide is about what would our parents like to know more information about? And so we're going to talk about how we're addressing that as we move forward. Cheryl, quick question. Would you like me to stop every few slides or do you want to wait till the end to ask your questions?
No, no, wait till the end because you might cover it.
Okay.
I just had a list of questions I want to make sure we touch on today.
Great. So we are going to be doing orientation for our families September 1st through September 3rd. We will be bringing small groups into school. We will be outside. We will have a section that is for, that will be facilitated by an administrator, one of our, either Tom Pringle or Steve Gagnon to answer technology questions, a classroom teacher, as well as someone from our school counseling program or our social worker to talk about the SEL components of remote experience. The other side will be our students and they will be in three stations. So in small groups, of course, following all CDC guidelines outside. They will have three stations for roughly 15 minutes. One of those will be with their actual classroom teacher for the year. The next will be an opportunity to meet with related arts teachers and hear about how that programming will play out in the remote experience. And then the third will be with our school counselors. Again, really, the reason we want our children to be in three different groups is that we want to have three different adult eyes and brains on the group of kids so we can really strategically plan on how to meet their needs. And that happens much better when we have more than one brain on a group of kids at a time. So we can collaborate together to provide what the children need. So you'll see under the parent section, of course, we're going to start with one of those remote learning expectations. That's everything from as simple to, we really feel it's important for kids to have an area that they consider their school area. And I don't mean a desk with their feet planted firmly on the ground, but I do think it's important for students to have an area that is free from exciting stimulus. And I, what I mean by that is if your siblings are outside your door climbing trees and playing on the trampoline and you're trying to focus on learning, it's pretty challenging. And so really helping parents understand how strategic, how important it is to be strategic about the environment we create for our students. In addition to that will be, of course, the expectations that our teachers will have on themselves to provide an education and we'll talk about all those details as we go. We're going to do brief introductions to the platforms that we'll be using, which are Seesaw and Google Classroom, and really explaining how to navigate that. Several parents have asked about the learning targets and the competencies. So we will, of course, spend some time on that and help parents know where to locate the specifics of that. Roles and responsibilities of parents during this. One of the things that we found, we know the parents want to be really, really helpful for their children. And so, you know, oftentimes they're kind of right there with their child trying to learn and they're sort of encouraging and pushing and nudging. And as much as I love the parents want to do that, it's not actually helpful. We need to know what kids know and how comfortable they are. And if a parent's constantly nudging, we're not really getting an accurate assessment of the students' skills and abilities. So we're going to have those conversations and sort of help guide our parents in the best way to support their children during that environment. We'll talk about well-being, of course, how we're going to communicate and how frequently we're going to communicate. And then we'll have a question-answer in small groups so that parents can ask their specific questions at that time. At the very beginning of this meeting, there was mention of how we are going to get small groups of childrens and cohorts, we were calling them, into the building. So here we sort of are trying to outline our beginning phases of this or the beginning stages of this. And the reason I say beginning is that this is how we're going to start the year. This is the criteria and the logistics, but we also understand that that will evolve over time. And that will evolve based on what health information we have, on personnel, on what parents and guardians are comfortable with and what's actually available in terms of space so that we can follow all of the expected guidelines, what's available for materials. As you know, there's a shortage of almost all PPE, so we have some restrictions. We need to make sure we have all of that before we can move forward. So in terms of the logistics, we picture individual or small groups potentially coming in depending. Any student could potentially be there one, once a week, up to five days a week, depending on the situation, anywhere from 30 minutes to two and a half hours. And I think the most important piece of this column in terms of logistics is that those determinations will be made by SMS staff and the teams of educators that work there, analyzing a whole slew of data and information to make what the best decisions in the, in the interest of all of our children. I know there's been questions about, is this just a certain group of children? Is this, people had asked if this referred to special ed children. This is for every single child at SMS based on the criteria that we're talking about in the second column. So again, some of the criteria for consideration is access to appropriate technology, social, emotional wellness, student learning profiles. Our teachers have a extensive collection of data about your children in terms of their performance, their achievement, their needs, their strengths, and all of that will be analyzed as we make these decisions. Your child's ability to engage remotely based on last spring. And then, of course, the nature of services. And what I mean by nature of services would be sometimes PT can't be done via Zoom. It really needs to be done in person. So that would be a service that we would consider as a priority. We did have questions about special education and Section 504. And we want everybody, those families and those children to know that you'll be soon receiving a phone call from myself, Selena, or Kate Belanger where we would talk about potential meeting dates, the plans for the year, whether or not we need to meet immediately, whether it can happen on September 15th based on when the most recent IEP meeting was or the 504 meeting, and then any necessary evaluations that need to take place. And then, of course, just reminding everybody that any decisions regarding a child's service or placement are always determined by the student's team. That hasn't changed nor will that change. We just wanted to reiterate that. So this is the part that I was talking about, that we began thinking about and planning for early in the summer. We really felt like one of the complications of the spring was that we realized pretty quickly into the experience that there were a variety of skills that our students had not been taught or needed in order to be successful remotely. And so we really decided we wanted to figure out a way to roll that out across the entire building, pre-K through fifth grade, to acknowledge that there are specific skills students need regardless of the environment, but certainly in a remote environment. And so we're going to have a school-wide inquiry focused around the question, how does knowing myself help me navigate the world around me? I think it's important to just mention at this point, this is the work of the admin team and a small group of the educators at SMS. There has certainly been input from a number of people, but this has not been fleshed fully out by the entire staff because we haven't come together and won't be coming together until later this month. But we have started a lot of collection of materials and resources and compiled that in a way that is easily accessible to families and to our staff as we roll this out. So what's the rationale behind having a school-wide inquiry that we're going to start the first eight weeks with? And I think this will hopefully answer some of the parents' questions about how we build connections. So this entire inquiry is built around the premise of building relationships and connections with our students and really hoping to focus on empathy and resiliency. So as we learn to discover who we are as learners, who we are as classmates, who we are as independent problem solvers, we are also then learning about our teachers. We are learning about our classmates in a way that hopefully builds understanding and empathy and also encourages us to better understand ourselves so that we can be successful. It also provides opportunity for us to comprehensively assess each of our students. And like I said in the beginning, it's beyond their academic skills. And like I said in the beginning, it's beyond their academic skills, but also their social skills, their emotional awareness, and their executive functioning skills. As many of you know, our executive functioning doesn't really begin to function on its own until 24. But we know that kids need to be practicing these skills, certainly with adult support and support from their peers. But we do need to be really cognizant and explicit in our teaching of this if we want students to be successful in an environment where they're not able to be in the classroom all day. It also creates an environment where the skills necessary to successfully navigate this are identified, and that's identified by the adults, identified by the students, opportunities for practice for students and staff to reflect on how the students are doing and then to ensure that those are mastered and acquired. And then the very last item on that page, on that slide rather, talks about that this really does establish a unifying and collective focus across all of SMS, which is something the parents have been looking for as they begin to figure out how this is going to work in their homes, with their neighbors, and with the cohorts of people that they're choosing to work together with. And if there's this unifying school-wide inquiry, we can certainly depend on one another because there is a unifying element that is comprehensive. So then, the second big concept, and it did go out in my letter that went out a couple of weeks ago, is the need for us to really recognize how interdependent we are and how if we're going to thrive in this environment, we have to depend on one another. And so we thought that was really important to mention tonight in the presentation. So the rationale is that it simply, sorry you guys, it's going to take all of us working together to be really honest and vulnerable and have, ask questions, say, I don't know, I'll get back to you, and work together on those things to recognize that some of this will be direct feedback from families about what we might be able to do differently for their child, that a child might get involved and say, this is not working for me, can we look at this differently? We had a great fifth grade student last year who about three weeks in said, I can't do morning meeting with 17 other kids, it's uncomfortable for me, I can't focus. It starts, and this is a little boy, 11 years old. I can't focus, it starts my day off on the wrong foot. He literally emailed his teacher and they made another plan. He didn't have to do morning meeting with his camera on and they actually followed up with a brief one-to-one after the morning meeting to make sure he felt comfortable and knew what he needed to do to be successful for the rest of the day. We want to encourage that style of communication with our students and our parents. Ask for help and offer to help, so whatever that looks like. And I guess what I mean by that is, this summer, we knew that we had a number of students that while they may not have qualified for the traditional ESY extended school year, really needed to remain connected to SMS. They needed to have a lifeline, they needed to feel important, they need to feel heard. And so an example of that would be Kate Belanger and I split up about 40 kids and we have weekly one-to-one or small group Zoom sessions, and it's literally just checking in and laughing. I had a session with a girl last night at 5:00 because she goes to care during the day and all she wanted to do was make funny faces at me and get really close to the camera. And we joked about if she did it for too long, her face would be frozen that way. So it really, that's what we mean by just offer to help in any way. It can look very different for different people, but to really put ourselves out there for one another. And then, quite possibly, the most important point on that slide is that we need to be proactive, direct, and frequent with our communication. And I often say, it doesn't help to send your concerns to someone that can't answer them, so send them to me. And while I may not always have an answer, I'm the one that can get an answer for you. And so we really want to be putting as much information as we can out there as soon as we can so that people can then formulate their questions and we can answer them before we get behind the eight ball. And we want to encourage everybody to do the same thing. Third big idea, and this is true for kids, this is true for adults, this is true for family, this is true for teachers, is consistency and predictability. So we know that student engagement and progress and achievement increases with a consistent daily and weekly schedule. We know that also supports parents in their efforts to try to figure out how they're going to make this work and to be able to support their child in the best way possible. And so we will have consistent daily schedules that will be the same every week for our students. Of course, we know that on the 45th day of school and around that area, we'll be reevaluating, but this is what we'll be starting the year with. We also heard from parents about the importance of a streamlined platform so that they weren't trying to go to six or seven different places to gather Zoom links or to find an assignment. And so our teachers have been working on mastering some of those skills. And so we'll be using Seesaw for all things, so students will be, you know, posting their work. Some teachers will be using Google Classroom because that does have the slides preserved forever, but students will access that through Seesaw. So there is one platform for our parents to understand, and during orientation, we'll go over that in more detail. And then we're hoping, I mean, our expectation is that we'll reduce some of the confusion and lost instructional time. And then third, the SMS Wolves website will provide a singular location for all the helpful resources and important information. And last year, we updated that weekly and we will continue to do that for the foreseeable future in a hopes to, again, streamline, maybe be consistent, be predictable for our families and our students. And then the final thing we wanted to mention, just for key dates, because we know there's been lots of questions about that. So August 26th through September 9th are our in-service days. The teachers will be working on many things, but certainly focused on trauma skilled development, empathy, resiliency, we'll be working on the inquiry that we're talking about. We will be having our open house or orientation days. So there's a, we're working with the math pilot program, there's a lot of professional development. And then we'll be doing tons and tons of technology, software, applications, programs so that teachers feel very competent in the use of those. From September 1st through the 3rd, again, are those orientation for families. We will get out the specific time of your class's orientation time as soon as we possibly can. We have a few logistics we have to work out. And then September 10th is the first day of school for all children. So that summarizes what we were thinking in terms of the start of the year, and then I will turn it over to you guys.
Have a question, can I help in? Eric, you're on mute, okay. So that was one of my first questions was, do you have a plan of what orientation's going to look like? And how are we going to do that? So I'm really happy to see what you have there. I have a few questions though, the orientation, you're spreading it over three days. And what's the duration for each one of those events?
Sure, so it is over three days. We're expecting about 45 minutes for each orientation, but we're going to schedule them at an hour so that the first class can leave before the next class comes in because it's really important for spacing and to follow all the CDC guidelines. So we're leaving that 15-minute buffer so that we can ensure that everybody has left before the next group of people arrives.
Okay, and when you say small groups of kids, are you taking a class and like dividing it into three? So if you've got 15 in a class, there'll be five over here and five over, okay, okay.
You got it, yeah.
Trying to get a feel for that, okay.
Yep, and it will be outside, there'll be three stations. Worst-case scenario, it was pouring rain, with 15 kids, we can still successfully spread them out in the gym and do the stations, we could use the gym and the cafeteria, still successfully spread them out enough so that we can follow all the expected safety guidelines.
Okay. How many kids, just ballpark, do you think will meet those criteria for in-person service and supports?
So that's a great-
That's a tough question.
Yeah, no, that's a great question, Cheryl. We did send a survey out to our staff members just a couple of days ago, sort of asking us to think about their rosters from last year. And we asked them to sort of tell us what group of students would they see as really tier three, like the ones that needed the most concentrated intervention? Because that would be one, one group of children for us to think about, right? And then we also asked them to think about the students that needed another level of intervention, but it may not be that they have to come into person. So we know we have a certain population of students that really struggle with executive functioning and they might really benefit from a one-to-one check-in in the morning virtually where an ESP gets on with them and says, okay, let's think about your day, let's get your computer all set up, let's open the tabs properly, what, you know, really thinking about the day's schedule, how do we want to, you know, and then the end of the day doing the same thing, let's color coordinate, let's highlight what you need to do, really kind of, it really depends on what's shared with us by the teachers to help us formulate those groups. And I really wish I had a more firm number, but I'm not comfortable giving you a percentage, unfortunately.
Okay. Okay. When you were talking about the skills that they'll be, that they'll need for success this year, resiliency and empathy, things like that, will they be coming back? You're going to have them discover these skills, it sounds like, and then, but you're, you know where they're going to land or where you want them to land. Are they going to come back to those skills during the year and assess themselves, how am I doing? And so that it's always top of mind that, you know, I need to practice and learn this and how's my behavior changing, stuff like that?
So yeah, so an example of that would be something about, you know, a specific skill, like how would I be able to curate valid resources? So a lot of what children do through inquiry is a lot of research, right? And so if they're going to be able to do that independently successfully and not inundate their research with information that's not either reliable or valid or helpful, we need to teach them specifically how to do that. And often when that happens, students will set a goal for themselves. Like I will identify three primary resources that have been checked for validity and reliability. And at the end of the week, when you're checking in with your one-on-one check-in or two days later, you say, okay, let's look at your resources.
I do.
How did you know they were reliable? And at the end of the week, the student's able to look back and be like, ooh, I still need to work on that. I went to Wikipedia over and over and over again. Or, you know what, I really did a nice job, I was able to access three different, you know, web browsers that provided three different sites. Or I, you know what, I talked about it with my uncle and he sent me a book, or, you know, that kind of stuff. I think we have this really cool opportunity to develop the skills that kids are going to need regardless of the platform or the environment, with a real focus on it.
Good. And then you said you're open, the first day for teachers, it sounds like it's August 26th?
Correct.
Okay, do you need anything from us on that day?
Sure.
Sometimes we show up and we say hello, you know, I don't know, we don't, I don't know that we add a ton of value, but, you know, what does that day look like, you know, what could we do?
Sure, so we've actually been working on the, the days that we have together this week. We've done a lot of planning with all of the SAU, with senior leadership and our consultant leading us through that. If you could give me a little time to get back to you, because the PTO also reached out. And we are going to be doing this both virtual and person because we do have a number of staff that cannot return to the building. So there, we'll be offering it in different modalities for our staff, just like what is, what is necessary for them.
Okay. And then I want to go back to my list. I do have some other things, but I think they can hold for a moment. It's more about staffing and positions, enrollment, stuff like that, so we can come back to that. Anybody else? You're new, Eric.
I know, I didn't realize that. Chris, I saw your, you had your hand up, go ahead.
I was just wondering how this is going to mesh with Chris Andruski's proposed format for every child's day. He had shared one at the joint meeting. I was interested to see how, what you're proposing and what he's proposing, will they be integrated? Or how is that going to work?
Sure, so I think that the, the schedule that Chris proposed was a template or an example of what was essential in the schedules that we built for our school in the sense of predictability, knowing when your child's related arts are every day, knowing when the expected lunch and recess is, knowing that you'll have live and direct instruction from your teachers. All of those things will hold true in our schedule as well. So I don't, it matches perfectly, I think. I think it matches exactly the spirit of what Chris was proposing. It may not be identical with the timeframes, based on our current, like we have six second grade classrooms, first five and in the first grade, but will certainly match the intent and the purpose of routine, structure, live instruction, those things that he had mentioned in that schedule he shared.
So even the timeline, like at nine you start your day, that, that can, can that vary teacher to teacher? Or how is that, is there a standardization of that across SMS?
Sure, so those details are going to have to be worked out, Carissa, in the next few days. We certainly want it to be standardized across the entire building because we know that that's super important for families to be able to support their children. And so that's our, our ultimate goal, absolutely. I just don't want to say it's exactly nine, we may decide on 8:55, you know, I'm not, I just don't want to, but yeah, the point is-
For the standardization.
It's, exactly, yeah.
And then another question I had regarding the challenges, especially in K through two, that we're going to be facing. And again, I go back to that template because from what I understood, that joint, at the joint meeting, that was supposed to be across the SAU. And I think that K through two is going to have a more challenging time. Is that going to be tailored to what they need? Or will we be within that, that standardization? Does that make sense?
It does, I think that we're going to be developmentally appropriate at all times. And I think that that's where that, and I don't want to call it veering from the schedule, I think it's how we look at what that looks like. So if there's an ELA block that's an hour long, what does that look like for a kindergarten-age student, right? So it might be that the teacher does 10 minutes of direct instruction and then has small groups that they meet with, so the kids get additional live instruction, but it's in a smaller group. It may be that they get on and they say, we're going to do this now, I want you to go do that and come back and we're going to share, like I think that there are a lot of ways to think about that developmentally. We also believe firmly in that we need to be sort of having monthly delivery of materials and whether it's we open and we say, please pick it up at the school, because there's so many families, 383 to be exact. We do believe that we need to provide things that will allow for not just online learning, but can we send home science kits, can we send home art supplies, can we provide books for book circles? Those sorts of things so that kids are obviously engaged in complex learning, but not necessarily in front of the computer the entire time.
My last question, how are we supporting the teachers in, in their ongoing education of remote teaching? Because it's a different beast and it's so challenging. Are we, is there training that's happening or what are we doing in terms of that?
Yep, so a couple of things, we did, we again surveyed our staff about, so we actually did a reflection back at the end of the year in May, where we, each grade level or each special ed or related services, used a guide that we had asked them to fill out about what was successful about this remote experience? What were the tools that were successful, what did you learn during this time? What is worthwhile if we end up remote again at any point that we need to think about? We use that information then to help Steve Gagnon and Tom Pringle think about professional development because most of it is centered around technology at this point, to provide additional workshops or learning opportunities for our staff. We recently sent out another survey so that on the 26th through the 9th, we can do really intensive, specific support for our staff around that. I will tell you that the vast majority of them, and not everybody, because we're all in different places in our journey, feel so much more competent and comfortable with technology, whether they, you know, learned about Book Creator and really feel that that's valuable, whether they use Screencastify to tape their lessons or all sorts of things. They're feeling so much more confident in their abilities to navigate the remote experience.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board, Sarah, Cheryl, Erin? All right. So Kate, Kate, Selena, thank you very much, we really appreciate all of our work you put into that. Now, in terms of, so I've seen some questions coming through. And I know Esther, you had answered a handful of these, are these ones that have come in live? Or were those some of the ones that were there before?
No, what I've loaded into the chat are the questions I got via email. Kate and her team and I worked together this afternoon to answer them. So we just posted them in the chat, so people that sent me an email. I didn't include the whole entire email, I pulled the question out, otherwise the chat would have been very long. So, and a couple of questions, we combined if the question was very similar. So hopefully those answered the questions that came in via email before 5:30 tonight. A couple came in after and I responded directly to those folks saying, hopefully they would be answered tonight. And if not, we could follow up with Kate Lucas and her team tomorrow.
So what I'm going to do next, Eric, is I'm going to turn the chat on for our attendees to ask their questions to the panelists. I think, do you want to read the questions, Eric? Or is that something that you wanted to do, Esther, well, whichever you please.
Either way, I'll, I'll tell you, I'll read them and then, you know, whoever would like to sort of step in and answer it, please, do so.
Okay. So I've turned that on so folks can start entering their questions as they would like them answered and we'll go about that way.
Okay. Here we go, off to the races. Let's see, how will you test the children, I think is the first question. I think is the first question. Right, so I guess I would defer to anyone on the team. How are we planning on testing children to monitor? I guess the follow-up to that is the modern progress.
So we're able to still participate or conduct a variety of assessments even remotely. So is things like our Fonda's and Penel Benchmark System, we can absolutely do remotely. Again, so what's interesting about that is that kind of goes back to what we were talking about on supporting our parents. So if we're doing, um, a Fonda's and Penel Literacy Benchmark Assessment, we certainly can't have the parents sitting there and being like, no, 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 this. And, you know, because for obvious reasons, we're unable to get accurate data. Um, but we can do a variety of our assessments even remotely. Um, certainly one-to-one Zoom sessions would provide the platform to do that. Um, we also have what's called iReady Mathematics, which we use already for our math benchmark. It's an online platform, so students can do that from home as well. And then, of course, students are always uploading their work to Seesaw, which provides an opportunity for us to see their work specifically and provide them feedback. And then at any given time, during our small group sessions, um, students can, you know, share their work, share their thinking, teachers can provide immediate feedback, so we can continually assess our students' progress. And then if we have concerns, we have a variety of services we can offer those students. We have tutors that can work with them. Um, we have ESPs that can wrap around them and do pre-teaching or offer small group instruction. Um, but we have a variety of ways to, if we're worried about a student's progress, to assess them and to support them.
The Fonda's and Penel that Kate was talking about refers to reading. There was a question, Kate, that just went with that.
Okay.
Thank you for jumping in on that. Um, there's another question in here. Can you speak to when teacher, when we'll have teacher assignments?
So one of the questions that was included in the survey was specific to, um, because we had heard from a number of families that are looking to, um, work together with some additional supports outside of schools, maybe after school, or they're bringing someone in to help their children during the day. But a lot of people had talked about doing it across several families. And so one of the questions we asked was specifically, are you intending to, you know, partner with other families during this time? And that does have potentially implications for class placement. I don't know that we'll be able to honor all of those, but we certainly want to be cognizant of that. And if we can, we want to be able to put those children in the same class, because it really does, um, support that community piece that we think is so important, that the community is going to need to rely on each other to make this work. And so we want to be able to support that. So our hope would be that families, most families, again, we have 67% have already completed that, that that can inform that, and we're hoping to do that over the next probably week, Eric. So I would say sometime, maybe the end of next week, we'll have permanent, well, huh, fluid class placements, but hopefully as close to permanent as possible.
Um, and I, I think that the next question that sort of follows up on that is do we have a sample schedule to provide? And I imagine that's still in the works as well? Or do we have something that's, can sort of be shared on that?
So I feel like, to be honest, it's, it really is in the works still. And I think that goes back to the question about it being developmentally appropriate. And we really have to ensure that the schedule, we, we really want to ensure that the schedule that we put out, um, is going to work for the different, the difference between a kindergarten kid versus a fourth grade kid. But we are going to be putting out schedules as soon as we possibly can, um, so that parents can plan around that.
Um, there's an interesting question in here around school activities, like cross-country running. Uh, activities are important to kids and they're very isolated. Have we given thoughts to some of those types of programs that are outside? Or is that too soon to necessarily chase that one down?
So my, oh, this may be premature, but I've been asked that previous to now, and my answer has been, we were not holding after-school extracurriculars that came up with after-school enrichment as well. And part of that is what we're really trying to do is not have, and I don't even know if this is a correct word, but like cross-contamination. And when you bring, you know, kids from all different families, all different grade levels, and you bring them together, you really are, you know, putting people at risk. And it speaks to exactly why we're not in school right now and won't be on, on September 10th. So at this point, that would be, no, we are not offering those this fall.
So there's another question in here around testing. I think, I believe you covered it, but it says testing in the spring was non-existent. Is there a plan for testing now? Would we know the dates? Um, I don't know, again, if that's one that can be answered.
I'm not sure if that parent's referring to the standardized testing that's dictated by the state, and that was the state's decision last spring not to have it. So I don't know, I don't know that the, has the DOE come out with a position on that, Esther or David? I have not heard.
So a recommendation that we do some interim benchmark assessments utilizing the SASS? That's something that I know is already built into your plan. Whether or not it's going to be using those actual interim SASs is something that we can continue to talk about. But right now, um, the statewide assessment system is, is, we received a waiver, as did most, if not all states, uh, for all grades three through eight and grade 11. So, um, we're looking to do, uh, an SAT assessment for our high school juniors in the fall. Um, that's still up in the airs to the exact date of that. But as far as elementary, um, they've not established whether or not there'll be a standardized assessment for accountability.
All right, uh, there's another question in here. I'm just going to acknowledge that it was there of a kindergarten, how they'd be expected to work, what it would look like. Again, I think that's, you know, back to the schedule. I think that's something that per Kate, that we'll be coming out with, um, sure, soon. How do you expect preschool children will be receiving services such as speech, PT or OT, virtual or in-person? Defer to maybe, I don't know, see Selena on, um, maybe you can elaborate a little bit in terms of what the plans are for that.
I'm happy to, Eric. So many of our students who access preschool are special education students. So for each of those families that has a student with an IEP, we will be meeting with you individually to talk about, um, the possibility of receiving in-person services. And as Kate had mentioned earlier, right now, uh, we don't have a lot of details with regard to our staffing and our spaces, but we'll be having those conversations with the preschool families within the next week or two.
Um, a question about, uh, will each student be provided with a Chromebook even if they did not need one in the spring? Um, can we talk a little bit? I know you, one of the things the board had done was, you know, back in May and June, was look to make sure that we had the appropriate technology. Kate, can you talk to a little bit about what the plans are in terms of Chromebooks?
Sure, so we did order a number of Chromebooks back in June, uh, iPads as well, and we do have quite a few in the building. Um, the, we are hoping, fingers crossed, that the delivery will be very soon. Um, it was originally September 10th, then it got pushed out to the end of September, but now it's back to September 10th, as I understand it. So as soon as we have, um, our order of Chromebooks, we should be able to, we will be able to provide a device for every family that needs it.
Um, so there's another one in here for families who not be able to participate in remote learning, would rather choose homeschooling or child learning style needs. Would you offer a way to the child to stay connected to their school? Perhaps a chance to participate in extracurricular activities or small group in-person class gatherings? We don't want to lose the connection to the community and we intend to return. Uh, I'll take the first pass at that in terms of small groups. I mean, again, I think one of the things we have to be cognizant of, we're not going to be in school for that idea of minimizing the amount of chances that we are, you know, connecting. Uh, I don't know necessarily about the way to participate in any of the other aspects of it. I don't know, Kate, if you've necessarily thought that through as well, or the team has?
Sure, so in the past, we've had homeschool students that participate in certain parts of the day. So they choose to participate in related arts, um, or something, that we would obviously open our doors to that and encourage, um, that opportunity to stay connected to, to SMS and their peers and their teachers, for sure.
So there's two questions, uh, one about do children have to go to orientation? And then the other one sort of follows up on, you know, do they have to go each day, uh, nine, one through nine, three? I think what I had heard there was, uh, they'll have a scheduled time slot that they're intended to be there. Um, and you don't, it's, that's just one time slot. But I imagine if you can't make that, we can make accommodations for another time slot. Is that true? And then I think the last part is, do they have to be there? I don't think we're intending on making it mandatory. Uh, it is completely up to the family in terms of what they're comfortable with.
So a couple of things for the, the orientation, the parent part, we will video a presentation with the question and answers and post it. So those families that are unable to go, um, can certainly watch the parent part with their children or just for the parents. Um, and then absolutely, if it was, you know, a difficult schedule to, to be at the time that is allotted, we can certainly look at another time. We're not, we're going to do whatever we can to, to, um, have that opportunity for our families. Did I miss another part of the question, Eric?
Yeah, I think you got it.
Okay.
How will you keep teachers accountable through the year, test their capacity to teach online and remotely?
Well, that's a difficult question. Um, so I guess it's not difficult in like, how do we hold them accountable? I think that our teachers have worked really, really hard, um, since the time of when it was just flipped over the weekend, um, and really have developed their toolboxes on how to deliver a really quality remote experience. Um, and so I think that we will use a collaborative approach to that in terms of, um, building our expertise across the building, certainly from August 26th through September 9th. But we also know that during our scheduled, as the schedule that was shared, um, by, by Chris, there's an opportunity for us daily, if not weekly, for us to continue to build those capacities, support each other, um, and offer to, whether it's co-teach, whether it's, you know, do lessons together, but we're certainly going to support each other. The part about accountability will certainly come through both the MOA and then our agreement on what teacher evaluation process will look through this year, look like this year. Um, some of that will be informal observations where I, um, where myself or Kate or Selena is part of a Zoom session, or we sit in on a planning session, or, um, something of that nature where we can provide direct, um, and specific feedback in an effort to support and coach our staff and provide them the best quality remote experience for our students.
Thank you. Um, let's see. This was a, you know, this one may be a little bit for Esther. Uh, do you have any more information on the community care centers with the YMCA? Is that definitely going to happen? Uh, if there are any updates on that?
Sure, um, I don't have much more update in that we're beginning to try to gather preliminary numbers from the schools as to tier one, tier two, tier three student needs, much to what Kate spoke to in her presentation about how experienced staff will be helping us kind of make those tier one, two, tier and three lists from each school. Um, also, working with the Y and other community partners to see what availability they have for staff, et cetera. So certainly in the works, it's right on the radar. Um, Friday morning, Chris Andruski and I will be on a meeting with, um, all the community partners that wanted and are able to participate in supporting this endeavor. And so we're hoping to firm this up and be able to put something out with much more specifics, probably in a week, week and a half.
And, um, so there, there's another question in here around a three, four, multi-age group. Will the, the teacher be changed? And I guess the, the bigger question that would pose to the administrative staff is in an all-remote scenario, how much shifting are we envisioning from what was already laid out at the end of the year from a teacher assignment's perspective? Um, are we envisioning that there's going to be significant changes? Is it just, um, hey? And I know it's too early to say, because the, the assignments aren't done yet, but you know, that's one of the questions that I see a theme in here.
So our intention is not to change a teacher's assignment. There may be a few students that are shuffled for the supporting of some of that, um, partnership within the family communities, but currently with the percentage of students that are returning for remote, it would not adjust our teacher assignments. And it looks like we would move forward with currently where our teachers are. Teaching is where they will teach, where we ended up in June is where we'll start the year in September.
Erin, I see your hand there, go ahead.
Thank you. Can we talk specifically about the three, four classroom rooms? If they're going to split to be threes and fours? Or is it going to be still the group classroom?
No, they're going to stay multi-age three, four. We actually feel that's probably one of the best parts of that multi-age is that we now have, um, the kids that are essentially looping kind of, you know, they're, now they're, they were third graders in those two rooms, and now they're fourth, uh, fourth graders. And we're super excited that they're going to be able to sort of support this transition into the remote experience for those incoming third graders. Um, so that will not be changing.
I will call this one out. Thank you for all your hard work this summer. We feel very fortunate to be part of SMS community with all amazing teachers, and I'll add the administrators. So, uh, thank you, we do appreciate, uh, hearing that. Um, are the children going to be ready next year to advance to the next grade after your remote learning? Uh, many kids are, many kids are not going to be, and how's the school planning on, uh, planning ahead on that? Or is it too early to say?
My expectation is that students make progress this year and that we have built a system that is going to support their progress and their continued growth. I don't want to, I can't foresee the future. This is a first time for all of us, and I don't want to pretend that I have all the answers for that. But our full intention is to be able to provide a robust enough experience, you're welcome, Dr. Ryan, um, that our students will make the progress they need to move on to the following grade level, wherever that is. Um, one of the things that we've spent a lot of time talking about is, how do we utilize the full staff in a very different way through this experience in order to support those students that really did struggle with remote? Um, and I guess what I mean by that is when we're talking about kids making progress, um, sometimes that's because a student is really uncomfortable with being in a group with 14 people on Zoom. It feels really, um, they feel exposed and they feel uncomfortable. So how do we use, um, either a different teacher or a para or an administrator to meet with that kid before that session and really expose them to the same lesson and prepare them so that they can turn their camera off during the lesson, so they don't feel uncomfortable? But they, they will have had the same learning experience, so they're not falling behind. Um, how do we, again, I had talked about using the morning time to really help kids with their executive functioning skills. Like, we didn't have, again, last spring, we were sort of punting and figuring out as we went, but we really can start this year in a much different place, um, knowing our students and knowing what they need and using our full staff to, um, provide much more targeted, specific, um, support in the whatever way they may need it.
Absolutely.
Um, how are you going to foster parent communication, not only between the teachers, but with you and, um, the whole, the whole team? May it be an IEP, I, a little bit, if I could talk, IEP team? May it be the extracur, um, the encore teachers? Are we educating parents of the best communication methods?
Sure, um, I think that's part of that beginning orientation, Carissa. And again, we'll, we will videotape that and record it, so that we can provide it for those families that are unable to attend. Um, but we will be talking about, you know, weekly newsletters and how are parents getting that information to know sort of what the class has been doing and what they'll be doing the following weeks? I think that that will be really helpful for some families that are having a harder time with our concrete schedule. Um, we will be doing our updates on the SMS Wolves once a week, where there's, um, updated information, so that parents can go to one location. So it's really, um, synchronized and simple. Um, and then we'll send out our, um, I think we called them COVID updates last year. I'm hoping to come up with something a little bit better, so it doesn't feel quite so yucky. Um, but, uh, you know, our, our emails from the admin as well. And I encourage phone calls or email, I don't really care, either one's great for me.
Because I'm, I'm asking the question more for parents to communicate with you, because I mean, you do an awesome job with communicating with parents, but it's a matter of, I just want to make sure everyone's heard and there's a channel which they can be heard.
Sure, so honestly, if, if, uh, emails are easy for parents, that's great too. Phone calls, um, if they're comfortable, you know, meeting with me outside and sitting six feet apart with a mask, if that, if that really works for some parents, face-to-face really matters to some parents. It's really difficult for them to, um, have an authentic conversation when it's via technology. I'm happy to do that. I think our job as the administrators at SMS is to be as flexible as possible with our parents, so that they can feel heard, um, and make it work for them.
That's awesome, Kate, thanks.
Uh, so there's a question in here, Kate's opinion of pods with private teachers. They seem expensive, yet there's intense pressure to join, and the surveys seem to set up that expectation. And I'm not sure I understand that, but I'll, I'll put the question out there.
So I don't, what the, the intent of our survey was not necessarily about the pods with a hired teacher not coming to SMS. It was more about the families that had contacted us that said, there are five or six of us that, um, we're looking to have someone come, the children are going to participate in the remote experience, but we're going to hire someone to support them in that during the day, because we're going to be gone, be going to be at work. So similar to like a nanny, but they were really looking for someone that might have some educational background to support their kids. And they had talked about what had been shared with us several times was, there are three families, we're going to be working together, we're going to be sharing this person. Um, that's sort of what we were thinking about. Um, I would like to see the vast majority of, not all of our students participate in our remote experience. I think we, um, are prepared to do a really, really good job for our families and for our children. Um, and I would like those families to stay connected to the SMS community. So, um, I don't want to sound like I'm encouraging something else. I was looking to support the families that felt like partnering together was going to enable them to provide, to support their children while they may have to work.
Um, so this is sort of a, a two-phase question, you know, will there be uh, what sport will be provided for parents, multiple kids that need help at the same time? And then there's also a question around clearly articulate um how children will learn in a remote uh setting, right? Ages five through seven, while we work in our own demanding careers. I'll take the first swing at this. Um, you know, I already started an initiative at the company that I work with. You know, to actually take a top-down approach all the way from the CEO all the way down to anyone in the organization and actually adjusting people's schedules to accommodate for their children's needs, right? We've actually moved to no-meeting mornings um, starting September 1st where there's no internal meetings. It's only uh, you know, client meetings that are a necessity. But even then, we've actually shifted to uh only having meetings in the afternoon as an example to make sure that families have the ability to support their children. So I think there's several things, uh, the one thing I would encourage is I think every employer is dealing with this and I think most of them um have some flexibility uh in there. So I'd encourage you to look at that route, but then I'll sort of defer to um, you know, the administrative team as to their thoughts in terms of, you know, how we can help parents be successful.
So I think part of that goes to the childcare centers that we have talked about, the learning centers or the um centers, the care centers, I'm sorry, I apologize for the name. I, you know, that's an option, I hope, for some families. I don't know. I think when we're referring to, I think that's, I think what the parents were talking about is that they're thinking about partnering together and supporting each other, whether that was through neighborhoods or just families that are very closely um connected. And kind of that's, I think, a little bit of what they were talking about, Eric, um, in terms of how do they do that? Um, when we think about our um five, six, seven, eight, nine, I don't have a perfect answer for that. I think it's going to be unique to families. I wish I did. But I don't have an answer for that. I think we're going to work really hard to engage the kids as much as possible so that when they are um learning, it doesn't require um close supervision or involvement of their parents. But I can't guarantee that and I can't make that um, uh, I can't, I don't have the ability to individualize that for every family, unfortunately.
All right. Along the lines of technology, will teachers be getting assistance with technology in their homes? Right, there was an experience where someone had um, you know, internet was constantly going out. Uh, I know Steve has helped out with many of the teachers um as well as the district has uh, you know, I T professionals that can help out. Um, and if anyone wants to sort of talk a little bit about that?
So we certainly have I T specialists that are helping with that, but we also um, part of what we had done at the end of the year was purchase additional device, better devices for some of our teachers. We did experience um six, some significant problems with some of the teachers' devices that were on the older side. Um, and then obviously heavily used in the spring, so we're working on getting them better technology as well to support some of the, you know, better connection for our, for those times that there's live instruction.
We provide, what are the milestones for the week, the month? What are the kids learning? What are they supposed to assimilate, assimilate, etc.? Um, again, in the spring, you know, we had no idea what was needed.
So our, our teachers follow the SAU 16 competencies and under, as you've um, our key through two parents will be very familiar, given the Alma Progress Report. Um, and underneath any one of those competencies is a series of ICAN statements or learning targets. And all of those are articulated to our students um in the classroom or uh via remote platform. So yes, there's clearly outlined on targets for their students' learning. An example would be in literacy would be word attack strategies. We're focusing on um a variety of word attack strategies in first grade. And so right now we're working on chunking words or, and that would be clearly articulated to the student and the parents. So the parents understood exactly what we were doing during literacy, week three of first grade.
Pause here. I don't, I don't see any hands or questions up, but just making sure. Any questions that anyone's been holding back on before I keep going down the list? It's growing faster than we go through them. All right, um. Will a directory be published to allow families to make connections outside of school?
So that is such a great question. Um, it actually was sent to me by a parent today. Um, legally, I cannot share that information with any parent, another child's class placement or the contact information. Um, I know in years past, the um PTO has sort of taken the lead on that by um opening it up through PTO and those families that want to put their child's name on a class list have done that, but I am not legally allowed to do that. Also, in past years, teachers have sent that out and gotten permission from families and said, are you okay with me sharing your email with the, all the parents in the class? I cannot do that right now, but that is something that can be managed um, once the school year starts and there can be permissions granted um or through the PTO, but that is not something the SMS administration can um take responsibility for.
No, the schedule's not set, but do we have an hour, an idea of what the hours of a school day would look like for planning purposes?
I think the expectation is nine to 2:15 or somewhere in that bracket. Does that sound right, Chris? And again, I want to go to like development, making it developmentally appropriate within that. It does not mean a child will sit in front of their computer from nine to 2:15. I don't want to give that impression, but that is the schedule of a school day for our students.
Um, you know, follow-up for, for folks who are going to homeschool, would there be the ability for children to have a connection to the classroom teacher, participate in morning meetings and learnings about specific skills such as reading? Or is it specifically staying connected by related arts classes?
That's certainly something we could explore. I think we have to, there is a, if we were in school, there is a percentage that a child, it would be in school to be considered enrolled in SMS and there's a percentage that they would be homeschooled to be considered um homeschooled. So that is something we would have to explore with those families to ensure that we're following the state guidelines.
What criteria will be used in October to evaluate a return to in-person learning? I'll throw that to Dr. Ryan and Esther.
We've answered that question uh several times over the past couple of nights.
Okay.
That response can be found in the frequently asked question document that we posted in this chat, which will also be included with the minutes in this video um on the website soon.
Are the teachers considering broadcasting remotely or from the actual classroom?
So at this time, we are um allowing for both. Again, we have a number of staff that cannot come to the building for safety and health reasons. They're not, um, it is not safe for them to enter the building. However, we do have some staff that are going to be um, are choosing to potentially um instruct from their classroom. They're looking forward to be able to have all their manipulatives and materials right in front of them and that does work for them. Um, and of course, masks, you know, we're going to have a lot of guidelines in order to keep everybody safe if, if those teachers come into the building.
Can teachers provide a list of materials, books, workbooks, craft supplies, etc. that parents should buy in advance of school?
So I would like to think that we can provide most of those things, but certainly every year our teachers send home a list of things they think the children will need for the year. Sort of the class list that they get of like supplies. And so my guess would be as soon as we can get as close to possible of um identifying our class list, I think our students can expect to receive a letter from their classroom teacher, which is a pretty common practice for the teachers at Strata Memorial School. And I'm sure included in that will have some of those supplies.
If there's limited in-person interaction, are positions being furloughed? You know, um, I E, school nurse, food services, etc. I will take the first piece of this. I think there were uh positions that we held off hiring such as recess aids. So things that we weren't sure we were going to need um, or have not been hired with the idea that we didn't want to hire someone and then ultimately have to, you know, reverse course on it. But I'll, I'll defer to Kate and, and probably the Esther or David in terms of, you know, what we sort of envisioned. But I think part of it is with the idea of trying to get back to in-school, um, you know, we sort of have to weigh decisions. I don't know if anyone wants to elaborate on that?
I'm happy to. Uh, we're looking at all of our schools as well as at the SAU office. We've also held off on hiring. We're looking at it from a perspective of how are people who typically would not be as engaged in the remote learning as they would be in an in-person, can we repurpose them and utilize them in other spaces such as the community care centers or in other parts of how we're delivering services? If we're unable to do that, then we are looking at possibly furloughs or uh, or layoffs. That would be something that we would be working with human resources as well as the board to arrive at that determination.
If I could just add Eric to Dr. Ryan, um, you know, it is really premature until we have a really great understanding of uh what the day looks like, what are the personnel needs. I don't think any, any recommendations can be made to the board. So we really, I think, need to let this whole thing play out to see where do we stand? And then I think we can engage in those conversations and discussions.
You know, an interesting question here. SMS is talking about opening up a community center for our kids, yet we're closing our schools. Please help me understand how this is different. Loaded question, but a, an interesting one at that. I don't know where to sort of direct that one to. I guess Esther, I think that, yeah, I see your hand up.
Sure. Um, a couple, a couple of major differences right up front is, first of all, this is a situation that isn't going to be open to all students. It'll be open to a limited amount of students and very small cohorts depending on that tier two or tier three need. It also is going to serve this, a similar purpose as to the very small cohorts that may be coming onto school sites that have related service needs, etc. So again, it's not a, an open um enrollment situation. And a lot of it will depend on numbers and workforce to see if we can manage um to meet those most most high needs. And that could be academic, social, or social or emotional, not necessarily all focused on academics.
Thank you, Esther. The teacher's schedule, is there built-in time for them to be able to connect to parents?
So um, a teacher, so yes, so teachers have um prep time, they have um, they, so also we have time before, when school starts that they're on the clock before children arrive, the same at the end of the day. So you know, a typical school day, if we were in school, the kids are dismissed at 2:55, teachers are on, at school till 3:15. So there is built-in time in any schedule for them to communicate with families. And it's also part of their professional responsibilities um to do that.
And then in terms of the technology piece, there was a question about, you know, who do they contact if they need a Chromebook? Is that going to be discussed at orientation in terms of who's using Chromebooks versus iPads? How is that sort of going to be managed?
Yep. So um, Tom Pringle um is going to be the point person for any technology difficulties in terms of like the hardware not working or I've lost my child's password and I need to do, he'll be the contact person for that. We're actually going to have like a form that they would fill out. It's like a ticket system um where a parent can go in, fill out the form, it gets sent to Tom. He knows what he needs to address, he can resolve it, send it back to the parents, communicate and, you know, check off that has been resolved. So there'll be a sort of streamlined way to communicate if there are technology difficulties at home.
A couple of questions around the library. Would it be open for small groups of kids? Or the ability to be able to check out books as well as lists of books for children to read?
So I love the idea of being able to utilize all the amazing resources we have in the library. I don't know that we would open it to students and parents, but we could certainly figure out a way to access those materials and get them to families. Because we do have, I mean, Mary Lou has done an incredible job of curating great resources in there and there's so much to offer. So it makes sense for us to get it in the hands of our students for sure. I just don't know the logistics of that at this time.
Um, another question around, uh, I need to start planning for backup care. Can someone give some sort of, some level of confidence that kids who do not fall into tier two or tier three, that there would be some sort of support? Esther mentioned something around uh childcare opportunities within, within community partners. Uh, I think, Esther, you said that's still in the works, but maybe you can just sort of recap at a high level?
Sure, I'm actually going to kick this to Chris Andruski, who's been uh communicating rather regularly with area providers.
Yeah, can you ask the, the specific question again, Eric? Sorry.
Yeah, uh, so it was talking about uh backup daycare for students that aren't necessarily tier two or tier three, you know, uh, and some of the community partners that were looking to, you know, partner up for those students who have, you know, those needs.
Absolutely. Thank you. Um, I, I actually had a very interesting call with another area provider today who I, I left off of my initial calls, who, who, who wants to be part of our conversation on, on Friday. Friday at nine, having a Zoom call with uh, uh, all the recreation departments and all of our SAU as well as multiple daycare centers. Um, and many are in different spots. Some don't have space uh or staffing to support it, others do. So we're just getting collectively to talk about how do we, how do we support a community childcare center? But also could we, how could we open up some of these centers that do have room spacing and staffing uh for families that have that? So I'll know more that I would be glad to share after our Zoom call on Friday about what locations may have openings uh before and after school care? And also uh what locations would be able to support the remote learning uh from their physical space? So i- it's coming together. It's just um, it's been a lot of work and, and people are in different spaces. But Friday I'll have a much better idea of where we land to be able to support our, our families across the SAU.
Thank you, Chris.
I love that there was a question for you, Chris. I actually had time to take a sip of water. I felt like I was under the gun. I was getting like parched mouth. I was afraid I wasn't going to be able to speak if I had to answer another question.
At all the heat. You, you were just, you were dying over there.
I am.
All right.
How will that info get out though? Chris, you'll know more on Friday. Will you be able to, I don't know, share an update for people or something?
Yeah, I, I'd be glad to share it out with, with our, with our boards, with our principals. Uh, I think our principals would be the best way to uh get out information uh to support families. I don't know if I'll have that for, for after Friday's meeting because I still, there's other planning. Because as we've talked about, what does transportation look like? What is the cost going to be? There's just so many logistics, but as soon as we have more of a plan or centers that have availability, we'd be glad to share that with families because we know they're going to, they're going to fill up quick. And that, but that's a, it's a great point, Cheryl. As soon as we have it, I'd be glad to share all information.
Um, another question a little bit around sports, especially children K through two. How do you strike the balance of standardization with flexibility to ensure parents can still work in this time? You know, nine to two is a good portion of the workday. So yeah, talk maybe a little bit about the flexibility for the students and families.
So I think one of the things that that actually goes to equity and I think it's a really important discussion and I think it's um certainly going to take longer than, than my answer right now and is more detailed than that, but I'm glad it was asked. Part of wanting to honor, um, if I think about the springtime and us saying to parents, do what you can, I don't want to veer from that message because I know everybody is still in a very precarious situation and I don't ever want anybody to feel like we're putting pressure on them. That being said, we also recognize that structure, routine, predictability, consistency will help our students achieve and stay engaged. So our hope is to really have a, a, I hate to even use this word, a plethora. I can't think of a better word. Remember that one, David. You can include that in wherever you're going next, in your next speech, whatever it is. But I want to be able to offer a plethora of, you know, recorded sessions, um, a variety of videos, a variety of assignments so that if a student is unable, so maybe they have to stop at noon. Maybe that's what works for that family and they can't attend to something after noon or they can't start till 10. That doesn't mean that won't be accessible to that kid. We will have plenty of resources, materials, recorded videos, like I said, where students can access that on a timeframe that does work for that family. In addition to that, and I think I've probably said this maybe five or six times, but I think it's important to mention again, that's exactly how we plan to utilize all of our support staff. How can we better utilize the people that are not the classroom teachers to wrap around those families and those kids to ensure they're getting what they need? So maybe I, maybe I'm doing something at five o'clock at night with a kid, just like I was last night. I'm into it, like, let's do it. Um, maybe someone's getting on at 7:30 in the morning. We will work with our families. Um, there are ways to make that happen. Please, I don't want anybody on the staff thinking, I'm telling them they have to work at seven and five. But there are some of us who have more flexibility in our schedules that can do that. You know, I, I said this in the letter that I sent out a couple of weeks ago. I truly believe this is going to be a community effort. I believe it's going to look different for many, many families and I believe it's our flexibility, our ingenuity, our creativity that is going to make it work um and remaining as flexible as Gumby to do that. So I don't think I have the answer for everybody. I don't think it's going to be perfect. I don't, I'm not claiming those things, but I do have faith in us to figure this out and to do it well. Um, and I'm committed to that in every way possible.
Glad we hired you, Kate.
I'm sorry, Cheryl.
Yes, I'm glad we hired you.
Me too.
And I, I challenge someone. And I challenge someone to use plethora and Gumby in the same conversation.
I'd like to hear it. Do it. Come on.
All right. So there's a question in here. I'm not sure I understand. It says, I, I'm not sure I understood the one to five days back for SMS for the students. Can you please elaborate on what, what that would be for all students or for qualifying students? Thank you for providing a detailed and thoughtful plan.
I think that was in my, my slides, the very thing I was talking about, the students that would potentially receive some in-service supports. And I had, was trying to show the varying way that that could look. So there may be some, so I may have a group of four fourth graders that are really, really struggling with their ability to communicate via Zoom. They're really inappropriate. They're saying inappropriate things. They're having a hard time sitting and focusing. So I'm bringing them in to do a social group once a week for 30 minutes, a group of four kids. The other, the more, more extensive would be a student that comes in for two and a half hours, five days a week, who is getting a 30-minute session of speech, a 30-minute session of OT, an hour of academic tutoring. That's the difference. I was trying to show that there really is varying stages of what that support could potentially look like. I did not want it to feel really uniform. I wanted to show that there are really a multitude of ways for us, plethora of ways for us to do that.
Erin?
So the kids, the two, two and two, three kids that are coming in, are they going to the community care centers or are they going to SMS for these services?
I think that is up for, I think that's a great question. And I think it's going to depend on many factors, Erin. One of the things I think about is personnel. How do we match the personnel with the number of students? When we look at that criteria that's mentioned, where do they fall on that criteria? How many, you know, I think about when we're sitting down to make these decisions, we're really thinking tier three first at SMS, like getting those kids in first and then seeing how that goes. And if we have room or, or it's safe or we have personnel, then we can think about maybe some of those tier two, whereas I'm thinking about the community care center is thinking sort of the tier two and maybe some tier one. I think that that's sort of that distinction. And I don't know, I don't think that that's really clear because we really don't know yet. But that's sort of how I see that happening.
Do we all agree that would prefer to see the tier three kids at SMS, familiar with their surroundings? That makes sense for?
Yeah, I feel strongly about that, yes.
Erin, too, some of it may be to tier three students have equipment, resources at, at the school site. So they would obviously, they would be at Stratum.
I think of some medically fragile students, they would definitely be at Stratum. We have the nurse, I mean, not the, there'll be nurses actually at the community care centers, but we have the nurse, we have their equipment. They're very familiar to us and so we're better able to meet their needs. So that would be an example.
Awesome. That's what I was hoping for.
All right. Tom, I think this one's going to sort of end in your lap. So I'll give you fair warning. For any of us teachers who work for other employers are covered under the family first, our FMLA, Family First Act for 12 weeks. Seems like there'll be a lot of teachers whose jobs won't be secure after that. If staff is an issue and there are a bunch of teachers wanting to get into the SAU or their plans to backfill these positions, or is the plan to extend past 12 weeks?
Yes, it's a great question. As the individual indicated, there are certain job protections, depending on the circumstances for our employees. I will tell you that we have, at Stratum Memorial, we have three teachers and one teacher specialist and six paraprofessionals who have requested accommodations under any one of those identifying laws that, that I think maybe our parent has shared. It's not a huge number, but they do have either medical issues, family medical issues or childcare issues. So there are some of those protections. I think the crux of the question is, will those people have a job if they need to remain out beyond that 12-week period of time? And the answer is that all of our collective bargaining agreements for our paraprofessionals and our teachers have extended leave opportunities. And I would argue even for non-unionized employees, under these circumstances, we would absolutely consider and recommend to the board that they approve, extend a leave of absences for those kinds of conditions. It's very appropriate for that to happen. We want to keep our talented staff. If it means they need to be away for a period of time, we will work, you know, with either hiring a substitute, just as we, just as we do during the course of the year. We have across the SAU, many, many maternity leaves and many, many long-term substitutes. So we're able to gear up and provide a substitute where necessary. But yeah, I, I think it's very appropriate. If they need to be out longer than 12 weeks, we would highly recommend to the board that they consider approving that extended leave.
Thank you, Tom. This is an interesting one. So Kate, coming to you, what is, what is our principal's hopes and dreams for the school year? Kate and Vice Principal as well, what will success look like for the school?
That's great. I love that question. So I think about seizing this up. So I guess, okay, so I'm going to get on a soapbox for a minute and I apologize to everybody. So I have some pretty strong convictions about what I believe school should be like for every child. And what I truly believe is that we have to stop asking our kids, what do you want to be when you grow up or how do you see yourself? I want it to be, who are you right now? And I believe COVID has given us this opportunity or this excuse to really allow our children to identify who they are right now as a learner, as a classmate, as a friend, as a sibling, as a child, as an artist. And to use this to really dig deeply into the competencies which allow for complex learning, that allow for problem solving, that allow for inspiring the unique genius in each of our children. And seeing them see themselves as capable of flourishing, even when they have to feel like they're doing it alone. Because I think there are moments, we, I think we've all experienced moments over the last six months where we feel lonely, that we feel alone. And I want the kids to recognize that they are survivors right now. That because of the pandemic that they're living in, they have acquired skills and had experiences that nobody else that is alive today has experienced. And that alone makes them special and unique and survivors and have skills that we all wish we had. And they are strong and capable and they have come out or are in right now this such special times. And I'm super excited to actually see how they evolve through this and how they see themselves as so capable. And how they're going to have first-person accounts of this incredible time. And they're going to be able to really know themselves and know what they need and be strong advocates for that. And so if you ask me, what does success look like? It is for each kid to come out the other side of this saying, I know more about myself, I'm proud about myself, and I have taken this time to be a better, better, a better version of myself. And that's for our staff, that's for our parents, that's for our kids. So it, we are in a crisis, but I feel like it's this opportunity to really flip, flip it and make them ready to navigate a totally ever-changing world in a way that no other children have been able to do or had the opportunity to do. So I'm off my soapbox.
All right. Thank you. Another question, does each student receive a Chromebook or one per each family, three kids? Again, I guess that's part of that, I think depends on the grade, but how do we handle multiple students that have the need for a device?
Our intention is for every child to have a device, not one per family, but for every child to have a device. They may break down and we may have to replace them as we go, but that's our intention.
All right. So there's another comment in here. Why are so many people, so few people aware of this call, connected to 10 people tonight? You are not aware of the calls taking place. Please do better with communication. Don't assume. This was a regularly posted board meeting. Board meetings happen on the second Wednesday, yeah, second Wednesday of each month. This was regularly posted. There was a Facebook text message that went around. I did post where that is on the SMS website. So it is under, if I pull this back up, under board information for Stratum, Stratum School Board Minutes and Agenda. Any postings will be there as well as the videos once they are saved. So if someone missed it, this certainly can be reviewed. But for those who are looking to see when we meet next, our next regularly scheduled meeting, maybe somebody can help it out. I lost my notes. I had them in front of me, but I think it's September 9th, if I'm not mistaken.
That's election night. Isn't it Wednesday, the ninth? Isn't that why we're opening on the 10th? Oh no, elections eight, the eighth. Sorry.
Yeah. So we would be, our next regularly scheduled meeting is the ninth and it would still be at 6:00 PM. As we will be virtual.
Yeah, I think we added this meeting all the way back June 10th.
June 10th, correct.
Yeah, it's been on the calendar for a long time.
Last spring, participation in encore classes was encouraged but not required. Will that be the same this year?
Nope. Related arts classes are part of every child's schedule and they will be a required class. Again, I want to articulate, I think it's really important. The child will have a schedule every single day and every single child is expected to attend and required. We understand there will be exceptions that need to be made and that's where we wrap around those families and those children.
Would teachers consider doing occasional outdoor socially distanced masked lessons for interested family, assuming the teacher is comfortable? And thank you, this meeting is very comforting.
At this time, we will not be offering that. I don't know what's going to change. And I think we're, as, as Dr. Ryan has mentioned, there's criteria that's been posted in the frequently asked questions that is going to sort of dictate what those things are. But we certainly know that we're going to continue to evolve and make adjustments based on the needs.
How will the tiering system work for incoming kindergarteners if there's no baseline in SMS to start? You know, how, what, how will the path look going forward if services need to be provided?
So just as any year, it will be the same thing. We spend the first, I would say, four to six weeks getting to know our kids before we do any assessments, particularly in kindergarten, because we know the data would be skewed based on just, oh my goodness, I'm in kindergarten. But then at about six weeks, we begin doing some literacy assessments, some math assessments, some speech assessments. And that, and OT assessments that give us a lot of data. And then based on that data, we provide services. And it would be the same even in the remote experience.
Let's see, so that, leaving, uh, that actually gets us to the bottom of the list, but I'm sure by saying that, there will be a few more that come in here. There was a suggestion, the meeting events on the SAU homepage lacked meeting details. Can this be fixed? So I will ask the district to take a look at that. I know we had made some adjustments previously, but it still looks like if people are having a difficult time picking up the meeting information. So maybe we can take a look at that offline and see if there's some improvements that can be made on the webpage. Let's see, so another one came in. Kids spent most of the spring not sleeping at night with anxiety about due dates and homework. What resources or tips are available for those children?
So we will be, we've already, actually already reached out to our SES staffs or our social and emotional services, meaning the school counselors, the social worker, the V C B A. And we'll continue to provide resources for parents and for kids around some of that. In terms of like, what are some great ways to talk to our kids? We provided some Lynn Lyons videos and some articles that talk directly to those sorts of things. But additionally, we are going to be partnering our school counselors and our social worker with each classroom. And there will be that partnership, they'll be working with the students in that class around the issues that are pertinent to the students in that class. So rather than subscribe to a uniform curriculum across all classes and all grade levels to start the year, we're looking at tailoring it to those specific students where the school counselor and the classroom teacher work on the lessons that they need to do that week to address some of those, whether it's anxiety, whether it's deadlines, whether it's, I'm having a hard time participating in a way that's instructive. We're really targeting those social, emotional lessons to the needs of the classroom and the kids.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Around the same topic, one of the challenges I found in my kids were beyond elementary in the spring was as a parent, I couldn't really keep track of my kids' due dates and work and stuff like that. Not that I mean there's space doing it, but our parents are probably trained to look in the folder. This goes back, this is what's due, da, da, da. So it's easy. Will there be a way for them to easily just review with their kids? Did you do this on time? Da, 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 and have some predictability to it?
Sure. So I think there's two pieces to that, Cheryl. For our youngest kids, K through two, there's more, there really isn't an expectation of homework, right? There's more of like, extend your learning, do some reading, that kind of stuff, which will always be in place. For our, our students in grades three through five, we're really encouraging the, the, the use of Google Classroom through Seesaw, which does allow there to be slides for, here's the day's activities, here's when they're due, here's when you'll be receiving feedback with a much more detailed set of deadlines. All of those things, of course, are available to parents through their child's account.
Okay.
Kate, I know, I think on Monday, or not Monday, I lost track of days.
Me too.
I woke up thinking it was Thursday, so it was a bad start to your day when you realize it's Wednesday. It was a conversation around the class size for kindergarten and what the enrollment looked like. I know that we have some numbers, but has anyone come back and confirmed or unenrolled? What does that look like so far?
So we're still at 75. Nothing has changed since you, that question I think was actually yesterday morning. But yeah, so we're still at 75 as of today, or as of yesterday. I did not inquire today.
How many sections would that be?
So we're going to, we have three straight K and we have two K ones. So five.
Can we encourage teachers to use Google Calendars as part of, I think, Cheryl, to your point about tracking homework?
So I'm hesitant to do that only because we're really encouraging Seesaw as the platform for all elementary schools. And so given that Seesaw is our platform, because it really does offer, it, the, the, the heart of Seesaw is it creates a portfolio for our students. We can, we can have, they can put their work on there and showcase their work and their learning and it never goes away. So I'm just hesitant to use Google Classroom because I feel like that's another piece of software. And what I'm hearing so much from parents is, please don't give us more software. Please stay uniform. Please stay as tight and as close as you can. So I'm hesitant to suggest that, although I don't want to shut the door on that. If it's something we need to explore at another time, but right now I would encourage that we do our, our deadlines through Seesaw. And again, I think a piece that will be simplified is that kids are going to have the same schedule every week. So it won't be a rotating change. So they won't have to say, oh, what's the schedule on Tuesdays? Well, it'll be the same all Tuesdays. So I think that that will help with some of those, those dates and the need for a Google Calendar, or I hope anyway.
Have we thought as, thought of as a district going back to Seesaw and saying, hey, you really need a calendar feature? I mean, it's a SaaS offering, right? That's something that they should be able to deliver to us. And I can't imagine we're the only district that has a need around that.
We could certainly, Seesaw's been wonderful working with us, so we could certainly look at that.
Esther, did you want to add something to that or was that what you were going to say?
I was just going to put Chris Andruski on the spot because I know he works closely with Seesaw. And we've asked them for different accommodations and they've worked really hard to meet our needs. So I anticipate Chris will follow up with that.
Not only that, I'm going to have Eric negotiate that for us. So it's, it's definitely a great idea, Eric. We can definitely reach out to them.
All right. I've got to answer a door here real quick, but any other questions here? Give a five-minute warning.
So I saw a question about kindergarten placement. And we had, we had met as a team and thought about what we were going to do for kindergarten placement. And then really things have changed so rapidly. So we are going to be placing the children in kindergarten classes. We are thinking of a couple of things is thinking about which siblings had the kindergarten teacher because that creates an automatic connection. And we've heard from many families that said, my oldest child had Melissa Mastin. Is it possible for my youngest? Because we already know them and that might help build that connection faster. So we are certainly going to be looking at that and trying to honor that if possible. We are looking at trying to do it by neighborhood again, so that neighborhoods can support each other. If they have three kindergarten kids within the neighborhood, that offers If they have three kindergarten kids within the neighborhood, that offers another opportunity to support each other and like, oh, is this happening for your kid? This is happening for my kid. And then we are going to be, our kindergarten teachers have expressed a desire to be able to potentially go to the kindergarten students' homes with their kindergarten ESP outside for maybe some sidewalk chalk or something like that, where they can socially distance with masks, if the parents are okay with that. But that would be another in-person opportunity to build a connection and then know who their teacher is. So that when we do have remote engagement or remote teaching, they are familiar with their kindergarten teacher. So we are hoping to do that within the next few days, maybe a week or so. Hope nobody minds that I just interjected, but I saw the question.
Looks like Eric is, is interrupted by somebody, something. Do you want to handle this one on accountability? I can read that. What type of accountability is there for, is here for teachers? This person had twins and two different experiences for each child. How will teachers be evaluated against senior leadership expectations of remote learning and will there be performance monitoring? I think they're wanting to know what kind of oversight and.
So that was, that was asked earlier and we did.
Was it? Okay.
Yeah, we talked specifically about really taking the coaching stance. So since last spring and through last spring, our teachers really did take it very seriously about learning a lot of technology and figuring out what remote instruction should look like and finding a balance and it being developmentally appropriate. And they've continued to grow their toolbox throughout the summer and will continue to grow their toolbox as we come together on the 26th. That being said, we feel firmly as an administration that our job is to, to coach and to work beside our staff. And so whether that's, you know, sitting in on a lesson and offering constructive feedback, whether it's providing an additional learning opportunity, we certainly could not be more honored and proud of the way our staff handled the, the, the spring and how seriously they're taking, providing a robust remote experience for our students this fall. That doesn't mean it's going to be perfect, but I really do have faith in their ability to deliver an excellent education regardless of where they're doing that. And we will continue to support them, just like they're going to support each other and build capacity among themselves and share what's working and continue to add to what they're doing for their students. I think there was another part to that, oh, the difference for different classrooms. So I will articulate that we honor the autonomy of our teachers and we know that teaching is a craft and it is an art. And there are certainly best practices and we expect teachers to utilize best practices. But we also know that it looks different because best practices is a varying thing. So it is not expected that our teachers are delivering everything exactly the same way. And I don't think we'll do that moving forward. There will be an expectation of best practices. And with, when it comes to twins, I hear that a lot. I think we have six sets of twins currently in our, in our second grade. And almost all of them have reached out and said, if we're remote, can you put them in the same class? And I get that, like, it's so much, I'm a mother too. I get how it is easier to, to support that. And we are trying to honor that as much as we can without giving one teacher, you know, 28 kids and one teacher eight kids. So we understand that when you have twins.
I apologize, I am back. I had a census taker at the door.
Perfect timing.
Or maybe buying a pizza for the kids or something.
No, hey, you gotta love Ring cameras. You can have a conversation with someone who's 30 feet away without leaving your seat. All right. So it sounded like you answered the twins question.
Right.
There was also, how will teachers be evaluated against senior leadership expectations of remote learning? You did that one already. Excellent. Will SMS Wolves provide updates, notify parents when updates are made?
So our intention is to update SMS Wolves every, we do it typically Friday night through Sunday so that it's updated for the beginning of the next week. So that is our intention to update it. And then whenever we send out a direct email, we tell you that we've updated and how we've updated it as well.
Interesting. Will you, the situation.
Is that like a text abbreviation that I don't know or is that a typo?
Yeah, so I was just trying to read through it. Well, will you maybe, I guess it's, will you maybe consider doing something different if COVID clears up? Except, yeah, children to come into the school in small groups. It's a little, maybe the person who posted that can sort of modify that. But I, I think the intention is, if, in a scenario where COVID clears up, I don't anticipate us staying remote long. I think that's wishful thinking, that it's going to clear up. And I think that gets back to sort of the question that, you know, was answered before and I think is in the FAQs is in terms of what will the district be looking at in terms of reevaluating, you know, as, reevaluating as the year continues? How, how will substitutes work when a teacher needs a day off? And there, there's difficult questions. So Caitlin.
Question. Caitlin, Caitlin, Kate Belanger and I and Selena are dying to get in the classroom. We'll do it. We're psyched. We can't wait. But we also have an incredible, well, we do have two permanent subs, which can certainly help with that because they're with us every day. But we also have, we have an incredible support staff that works so closely with our teachers that can support some of the small group that might be taking place. And maybe Kate is doing the delivery of the whole class instruction and the support staff is doing some of the small group breakouts. Last spring, when we had teachers that were going to need a day off for a variety of reasons, we had them notify the families ahead of time. So we'll be doing all sorts of those things. If we have a teacher that unfortunately falls ill and is out for two weeks or something, we have our permanent subs that will step right in and take over for that classroom for that duration. So we are fortunate to have on staff people that can do that as well as a few subs maybe. We're still working on that.
Do we have, I know this, this situation was something that was discussed at the SAU meeting, but are we in the, with the two permanent subs, are we in a pretty good spot?
Kate will have to respond to the two permanent subs. I think SMS is lucky that they do have two permanent subs. Our regular substitute pool, we have about 75 substitutes and a, I can't remember the exact number, Cheryl, but I think there was about 46 of them that said they would not be comfortable if school were in session to come into the building. The rest of them said, yes, I can still do that in a remote environment. I think maybe more of our substitutes will be willing to substitute. I think it will be a little bit more of a challenge in terms of the teacher sort of preparing the substitute to take over. They'll, you know, there need to be, I think, some different things done. But our subs will definitely be fewer than we've had in the past, particularly as we, as we move back to in-school.
Go ahead.
Curious about the idea of maybe supporting the subs with some training with remote instruction. Is that on the table? Is that something that's been discussed?
We have not considered that, but I think that is a terrific idea to be able to provide some remote training on remote learning. I think is a, is a really great idea.
But that does get us to the bottom of the list for now. Any other thoughts, questions, concerns from the board?
How are we going to use space that's typically, you know, occupied by kids like the gym and the cafeteria and stuff like that? Are those spaces just going to be closed off and?
I don't have exact answers for that, but I do have a couple of, when I think about the gym and I think about potentially some of the groups that might come in, it's a great space for OT, right? So OT service is delivered in the gym is awesome. It's what everybody wants. And unfortunately during the regular school year, it's just not, can't be utilized in that way. So I think that there are ways for us to think about those spaces and how we can utilize them when we do have small groups in. That being said, the more spaces we use, the more spaces we are responsible to clean and ensure have, have been properly, you know, taken care of. So I think we have to weigh out those decisions all the time, Cheryl. And I think that kind of goes back to Aaron's question about like, which kids are we bringing in first? Then how do we evaluate what space we have, what personnel we have? And I think we'll have to sort of go slow to figure that out in a safe and deliberate and intentional manner.
So this is a, maybe I should know the answer to this, but will we have like our gym teachers in a regular, you know, slice of the kids' day according to their plan? Will they be, you know, virtually leading gym?
They will have their related arts class every single day. Yep. So we, SMS, we value the related arts programs a lot. They bring such a great perspective and experience for our kids and often they're our kids' favorite part of the day. And so it was really important for us to continue that and ensure that it fits in the daily schedule and that our related arts teachers get to connect with the students that they miss so much and continue to, to keep that, those programs strong.
Go ahead, Chris. Sorry. I was reading.
How's grading going to work?
Sorry?
How's grading going to work? How are the kids going to be evaluated and, and their, how are our parents going to know progress and things to that nature?
Sure. So for our K through three, we are using our competencies and the, if you remember, there's a sort of a scale, sort of of whether they're proficient or competent. And that really talks about the level of thinking or the complexity of the, of the thinking. So in order to be competent or proficient, you're talking about a student that can, you know, analyze and synthesize and do more complex thinking strategies, you know, that idea of sort of being creative and entrepreneurish. The, the, all of the phases before that I refer to as the not yet. So if they're not quite there, it's okay. It means more practice. It means teaching in a different way. And we provide those opportunities and provide that feedback to students to say, so here's what that looks like if you're competent. And here's where you're demonstrating your understanding and here's what you need to do in order to go from A to B.
The same as, as, as if they were in school.
Absolutely. Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
So yeah, there's another one goes, thoughts using gym music are teachers for one of the Zooms, reading to, listener reading of. Okay, so I'm trying to read and comprehend here at the same time. Thoughts of using gym music in our teachers for one-on-one Zooms, reading to or listening or reading of students?
So our related arts teachers are going to be teaching all day. And as much as I like the idea of utilizing them as many ways as possible, they're going to be as busy as a classroom teacher. They're literally going to have six, delivery of six lessons over the course of a day. So unfortunately, that won't be a way that we can utilize the related arts teachers. They'll be engaging with the whole class of kids.
All right. And other questions, thoughts, statements, declarations? So I would like to, sort of a formality at this point, but I would like to put a motion on the floor for the board to consider, and that is to support the remote learning that has been recommended by the district. I feel it's important to make sure that, you know, the community understands that we have gone through, we've looked at all of the options. You know, we feel that this is the best plan, given what we have in front of us. And I think it's important for us to make sure that we come to alignment. I, we the first to understand that not everyone's going to like this, but at the same time, I think we need to support it and, you know, invest our time and energy into making this work versus trying to find other alternatives. So is there, can I get a second on that and, you know, for further discussion?
I'll second.
Second by Cheryl. Any further discussion from the board?
Eric, I just really want to highlight to the public why we're supporting it. So why, I think it's really important that everyone understands that we heard them and that we are supporting them because we looked at every avenue and every option. And so can you speak to that a little bit?
Yeah, I mean, I know if you look at what the district has done, right? Many of us were involved, starting back in the May timeframe, trying to figure out what the best way to go back to school was. There've been a lot of meetings. We've heard from a lot of voices from nurses, teachers, paraprofessionals, students, parents. And I think universally, we all agree, our, our desire would be to have onsite learning services provided. But the reality is, you know, there are a lot of unknowns. And while I, I keep hearing, hey, the, the rates are low, the rates are low, what are you doing? The rates are low because we are socially distant and you're already seeing in several communities where they've gone back to school, they're having outbreaks, right? And we have challenges with, you know, just being able to provide the staffing, right? We have challenges with busing. I think people don't realize that, you know, a bus that carries 73 students is now down to 21, which means you're running more than 3X the buses to, you know, be able to get people here, there and everywhere. In every corner we turn, every rock that we overturn, right, there's another problem, right? There's, you know, a, a chance that if we, and I asked this of the district, so I don't have the exact answer. So David and Esther, I don't know if Primax got back to you, but it's brought to my attention that if we deviate from the district's plan, there's an insurance issue for us and that we potentially would be uninsurable for straying from the district's plan. We're still trying to chase that down, but you know, these are the challenges that we're facing. And so we could continue to invest precious time and energy into finding more ways that are going to lead to the same conclusion that remote is, you know, the best way for us to start. Or we can invest the time and energy in making the remote experience work. Is it going to be perfect? No, right? We're going to learn. We're going to adapt and we're going to do everything possible to support the teaching staff, the administrators and the district in making this happen. And so I, you know, I personally feel it's, it's difficult for me. My, my children are older. Their, their challenges are different. They're not really excited about remote learning, but you know, it's, it's what we have to deal with right now. And I think that the biggest part is, is let's, let's get school going. Let's start it. Let's look to reevaluate it. And let's focus our efforts on making this work. And then, you know, hopefully there is a path to getting back into school sooner rather than later. And I think that's one of the things that, you know, we need to chase down as a district as well, is understanding what, what that goalpost is. And let's hope that it's not something that's ever moving down the path for us.
Thank you. I have some comments too. I know, I, this, the SAU put together teams of people, robust teams of people. Like 30 people per, per work stream to look at four different approaches to coming back to school, depending on what it looked like in the fall, so that we had at least vetted all these different ways. And the one thing we learned in July was that the hybrid committee came back and Eric, you were a part of that and said, this one is the only one that we really don't think can work. It's just not, it's not feasible. So we were considering the other three versions to build out plans, et cetera. And I know that the, you know, the 30 people who were working on each of those plans were, you know, this was not the, the people sitting on the bench. These are our leaders in the SAU who know how to teach, they know what it takes to run a school and a system. So I have confidence that those plans were well thought through. But also, I went back and looked, we didn't know what our teacher's situation was. But also, I went back and looked, we didn't know what our teacher situation was. I remember, I think it was July 20th that we had a meeting. And that was still something that hadn't been done yet was to find out where a teacher's sitting. Cause you can't ask that in June, what are you going to do in September? You have to ask that when you're closer to the, to the goalposts with like 30 days to go. So we learned, you know, that we have some serious situations with, or some of our teachers have some serious health situations that they need to protect themselves and their families from. And of course, that's not information that anybody would have access to otherwise. And I think that, you know, created a different situation for us. But also I've been, you know, working through a number of different scenarios. I did it again last night and I did it in PowerPoint because I was trying to figure out, are we missing something? Are we missing something? Are we missing something? Every scenario that had, you know, AM, PM, or Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, or split days or split, split kid, split cohorts, so there are split classrooms, so that you can have smaller cohorts of kids. You needed more teachers. You didn't need fewer teachers. And every time I ran a different, well, what if we did this? What if we did that? You end up needing more because you've got fewer kids in a classroom at a time. And we just don't have the, we don't have the ability to do that realistically. And then I saw in the Seacoast paper, it just came, it came out. I don't know, maybe it came out a few days ago, but it was in my mailbox and we just got it today. And I was reading how are other schools doing it? And they don't lay out, you know, what their teacher availability situation is. But you can see, oh, I see what they're going to do. They're going to, those kids are only going to get half their education this year because they're going to touch that class every other day. How do you get through your coursework? How do you master your competencies? Something has to give. You either have to have more teachers, you can have smaller cohorts, or you have to have more homework so kids are learning on their own, or it, it just doesn't work. So I'm happy with this approach because I feel like we're doing the right thing. It is, I have so much confidence in the, the team that we have running the school and their ability to step it up and bring the teachers together to create a great experience and to reach all of our kids and do a good job. I think we have a few holes in how are we going to support working parents? And that's an issue, but we're working on those, right? And I think we will find solutions. So those are my reasons for supporting it. This, this is the way I think we're going to get kids over the goalpost. So goal line, wrong metaphor, sorry, over the goal line this year.
Thank you, Cheryl. Carissa, Erin, Sarah?
I think you made it clear. I think I, I just want to know, I want the public to know that we hear, we hear them. We, and we did turn over every rock and we did have these discussions. And I don't think that we could have done any more as a board. And I'm proud of the discussions we had. And, and I will back the option because I know there, at this point in time, it's not feasible.
Sarah, anything you want to say?
Oh, it's rare that I'm out of words. I'm out of words. I, I guess I just want to, I want to thank the leadership team. I want to thank all of you. I want to thank myself for not crying because it's been emotional and it's been really hard. But I'm proud to live in the community that we live in. I know that this has been hard for our community members because we're talking about our children. But I'm proud of that. I know people are starting to understand our decision and look to the positive. And so I'm grateful for all of you that are looking to the positive and moving forward and trying to do what's best for our kids and all of us.
All right. So without any further comments, questions? You know, the motion on the floor was to support the district in the remote learning initiatives. I think I will amend that to, to also include, right, that we would be looking at, you know, I forget the term that the district used, but reevaluating at periodic basis, right, as to what the next steps are. So need a roll call vote. So you've all shifted around. So I'll start with you, Carissa.
Hi.
Hi. All right. Cheryl?
Hi.
All right, moving down. Let's see, there you are. Erin, you moved on me. Erin?
Hi.
Sarah?
Hi.
And I'm an I as well. All right. So a, a couple of questions did come back in as we went through that. How are supplies going to be given for encore classes?
Sure. Yep. We are going to be, our plan is to do sort of, we're estimating like a monthly or a frequent sort of material, either pickup or drop off for that very reason. We really want to be able to get materials in kids' hands because we want to be able to balance the sort of online learning with the, you know, the, the hands-on learning. And so our plan is to try to get materials about once a month or so into the hands of our students.
And then another question, getting back to the learning pods cohorts, is there a deadline to request students be placed in the same classroom teacher? We need to know in order to arrange tutor plans.
So we had asked when we sent the survey out today to complete it as soon as possible. So if they want to, anybody that hasn't completed the survey, if they could complete that as soon as possible, we're going to make every effort to make that happen. But again, as a student in the survey, we can't guarantee that because we have to, you know, keep the classrooms equitable and, and not have eight kids and 28 kids in a third grade classroom. But we would appreciate knowing that information as soon as possible so that we can then do the, the, the task of putting the classrooms together in a way that works.
Excellent. All right. So with that, I'm going to wrap up the Q and A session piece of this, David, if you want to. Either pause it or stop it there. We do have one other item of old business around the MOA. I don't know if that's a Tom conversation or where do we start off with the, for MOA memorandum of understanding?
I think it'd be great if Tom could just update you on what we're doing and our plans. There's very little that we can share, obviously, in a public meeting. There's not much for us to even give in a non-meeting. So Tom, if you can just brief the board.
Sure. So Dave and I received draft MOAs from the UNICERP director. We had a conversation with her last week just to ask clarifying questions. And we are meeting again tomorrow, as a matter of fact, on Zoom with the UNICERP director as well as the union presidents as well, to just continue the conversation around what the MOA will look like. Of course, it's, it's shifting, you know, a week and a half ago or two weeks ago. The plan was a little bit different than it looks like today for all remote. So now the MOA will focus on an agreement where the districts are all in remote learning. Our plan is to keep our boards up to date. We've heard from a number of boards around what their desire is around Dave and I, Dr. Ryan and I continuing the conversations with the unions and to what degree do the boards want to negotiate the MOA. Our strong recommendation is that we try to come up with a single MOA for all of the SAU. We think that makes the most sense for consistency, for uniformity, and frankly, ease of putting together an MOA for you as a board to consider and provide feedback to both Dr. Ryan and myself. So it's still very much in the preliminary stage, I would say. The conversation will continue. And now that we have a focus, particularly, you know, Stratum has now voted to support the, the, the online environment. We now have a real direction to go in with the unions into coming up with an agreement as to what that's going to look like.
Thank you for the update. I'm not aware of any new business.
A couple of things. I don't think it's new business, but I just going through my notes before the meeting. Volunteers for the Joint Board Budget Committee, we were supposed to address that in this meeting to make a recommendation when we come back. Does that sound familiar to anybody? Remember the joint board has asked for volunteers to be like an advisory team or some, a part of the advisory group and getting the budget together from the main office this year.
Right, yeah. Do you have any volunteers from the board? Everyone throw your hands up all at once.
Can I ask, what is, what's the requirement? I mean, what's the time requirement and what's the, what's that look like? That's always my issue, my challenge, you know? Can I get there? Can I be there?
Cheryl, in the past, there's, I would anticipate that there would be probably three to five meetings as we prepare and go through the steps to hear the prepared SAU budget with the budget advisory committee. And Dave, now, I didn't know if you were busy, so I started to step in. I know you're trying to make sure this is getting recorded and everything accurately, but. So, and then come obviously to the joint board meeting, et cetera, et cetera, those regular scheduled meetings. But I would anticipate it would be between three and five meetings. Does that sound right, Dave?
Yeah, it, it may not be as many as, as, as five. That would be dependent upon the, the committee itself. Travis and I are obviously trying to wrap, wrap around all of the return to school. I think next week we'll have a better idea. I have a couple of meeting dates that I'm going to recommend to Travis to get us all together. I know Molly and Michelle have worked on putting together the SAU budget. I believe that's pretty close to being ready. Michelle, can you give us a quick timeline as to when we'll be able to have our first meeting with the numbers?
Yes, Molly and I have been working on that. Molly, we viewed it this afternoon. And whenever people want to take a first look at that, we'll have it ready for them.
Perfect. So we'll schedule that and away we'll go.
And Cheryl, how, how many volunteers do we need? Was it just one from our board?
Yeah, in my notes, just one.
Okay.
Yeah.
So do we have a volunteer?
Erin, you look like you really want to do it.
It's a robust committee, Erin.
And it's fluid.
If it's fluid and robust, I suppose I'm in.
Thank you, Erin.
It's time to jump in, right?
All right. Thank you, Erin. We, we, we all appreciate that. Thank you.
The other thing I had, I didn't want to bring it up while we were going through questions, but do we have any open positions that aren't filled yet?
We had four ESPs open and we were really waiting to figure out a little bit more before we hired people. I believe we will probably hire for those positions considering the magnitude of what we want to be able to offer in terms of wraparound services for our students, all students. And we really want to be able to meet the needs of all of the students with their remote experience. But we didn't know and obviously things have been very fluid. And so we've kind of had things on the back burner, but it does look like we will post for those positions, Cheryl.
Okay. What does ESP stand for?
Paraprofessionals. So educational support professionals?
Thank you.
Yep. Amazing group of educators. So grateful for them.
Yeah. Oh, was this, I had this in my notes too, but maybe this was for next year, a math specialist? I think that was for next year, right?
Yeah, we did talk about when we build the budget for FY21, exploring that further. I think that was in our June meeting, maybe our May meeting.
Yeah, I think that's what I was looking at. Okay, that's all I had.
Okay. So without anything else, we have our next regularly scheduled meeting, Wednesday, September 9th at 6:00 PM. Anything before then will be posted on the SAU website as linked in before. I thank everyone for coming out and attending. Thank you very much for the engagement and the questions. Do we have a motion to adjourn the public meeting at 8:20?
I'll make that.
So that was a motion by Carissa. Do we have a second? Okay, I will second. All right. I'm sorry, Sarah, I beat you to it. Any further conversation before we dismiss? Do a roll call vote, Carissa?
Hi.
Cheryl?
Hi.
Erin? I think I saw an I there. I believe that was. Okay. Okay, I see a nod. Yes. Sarah? All right, I'm an I as well. Thank you very much, everyone. Have a fantastic evening. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Have a great night. Thank you.
You too. Good to see everybody.
You too, Cheryl.
Hey, bye.